I would not have made it back today.
For sure.
No.
Both Jane all night, mayor's there.
No, there is no way. You don't get a flight early enough by commute. So we would, yeah, no. It started at seven fifty. If they have a one o'clock game, I could get a flight at night. And sometimes if I take a, we take them really early. Yeah, Jimmy Wilson, would you guys please be there for us? Cause they are Casey fans. We did our. I am really thought we'd get bumped. We did really well. They had their number last night.
On games.
Yeah, it was a really good game. Trying to watch your watch.
Half a minute.
It's what?
Half a minute behind.
It's not awesome.
It turns like ten seconds later.
I thought they were all on one satellite and they just beat you down at the same time. Not so, huh?
So when did we get this new chairs? It's been a while.
Two months ago.
Yeah.
Two whole months. Oh, was it that?
I thought it was maybe toward the beginning of the year, but I might be wrong. No, you're right. Yeah.
All right, we'd like to welcome everyone and call to order the study meeting of the West Valley City Council. It is October fourteenth, twenty twenty five, and we're beginning our meeting at four thirty P M. In the multipurpose room of West Valley City Hall. All members of the council are present. They have council member Hugh, council member Norfelt, council member Wood, council member Whitstone, council member Harmon, council member Christensen, myself. We're also joined at the table with our city manager, Mr. Peely, and our city recorder, Ms. Kamik. Uh, we have our minutes from September sixteenth, a special meeting, and September twenty third, twenty twenty five. Turn those to the council for discussion or motion.
The motion to approve both minutes, September sixteenth and September twenty third session.
Okay, now motion in a second, I'll favorably say aye. And those stand approving team. Well, now go to our regular meeting for this evening. Um, there's been a proclamation for domestic violence awareness month. That's been a debt added to this evening's agenda. Is there a council member who would read that for us this evening? I can do that if you want. Okay, thank you, Councilman Christensen. And then there were also two resolutions added to the agenda. And we'll invite Chief Evans up to explain the first one and Brandon Harward to explain the second one.
Uh, this first one, apologize. You looked at it a bit ago. Uh, it was approved, but the state of Utah and FEMA requested it be on a certain format. So there's nothing changed except the format that they wanted it in.
You've got to cross a T again.
Uh, I, I didn't. They forgot to send what they wanted. Well, nasty. That's.
Any questions?
There was no changes.
Okay, thank you.
I can start this next one. Brandon Howard, he's battalion chief for the medical division. Uh, Captain Kissel in the medical division also. This new program, uh, I gotta tell you, I'm very proud of, of Brandon, the medical division. This program you're gonna hear about, we are the first in the state of Utah to be doing this. I will let Brandon explain what we're doing in the field with whole blood. But we will be the first agency to do this in the state of Utah, so it's uh, kudos to these guys for going after this. And it's another way that we've been leading a lot of the medical with these ambulance services for a long time. So Brandon.
Thank you, thank you, chief. So, yeah, we will be the first in Utah. However, we will not be the first in the country. There's about two other agencies doing this throughout the country, two hundred.
Oh, two hundred.
So it's been kind of tried and true, uh, but honestly, the leading cause of death in trauma patients is hemorrhagic shock, bleeding out. Um, people just, if they lose blood, they need blood. And right now in West Valley and the whole state of Utah, if someone needs fluid, we've been giving crystaloid fluid, which is not replacing their, with the right substance. Um, and uh, like when we treat our parent, we take, tell our paramedics, and someone has experienced hemorrhagic shock. The two things that we currently, the best treatments right now we can provide is diesel fuel. Cause they need blood in a surgeon. They need blood in a surgeon to survive. Like that's what, that's the best thing they need. And we don't, right now, currently don't offer either of those on the ambulances. Um, so we tell them diesel fuel, get them there fast. So, um, our state, our medical director, Dr. Peter Taylak, he's also the state medical director. Me and him, we ran some numbers throughout Salt County to see how are we administering blood? And in, and countywide, it takes about forty-five to an hour from EMS arrival to essentially receiving blood in the field. Where if someone can bleed out in minutes, an hour is just too long to receive blood. So we're hoping that this will lower that time, so people don't go into decompensated irreversible shock to kind of, so we can get them to a surgeon to save their life. Next slide. So, uh, essentially that we, for the prehospital blood transfusion program, we have gone to San Antonio, they, they have done this. We kind of learned from their doctors, their processes, um, and we reached out to um, our blood banks in the area. The Red Cross is gonna be, um, a, a big part play in this as well. We're going to address major bleeding with blood. So when someone loses blood, instead of giving them fake blood, we're giving them real blood. Um, and it's gonna be quite neat. This has been done during World War Two. This was done in the combat medics did this and they had great success. And honestly, the reason I think it went away was cost. Uh, a bag of blood costs about five hundred dollars. A bag of crystaloid fluids costs about a dollar. So it was, uh, I think it came down to that and also because blood comes from humans, it's a human specimen, it's a little harder to get. So what we did, let's turn the slide here, is we made a partnership with IMC. Well, now in West Valley, to make our, our system transition smoothly, most of our major traumas, we take to Inner Mountain, cause they're the closest trauma wounds are to us. So we reached out to their trauma services, their blood services and said, we bring you trauma patients. We would like to start them with blood sooner, cause we know it takes a long time for them to get their blood. And they agreed with us. Um, and they were, as we started talking about brainstorming ways of doing this, we actually thought something out of the box that will be unique to us. Cause most places will actually buy blood from a blood bank and then try to do that. I, Inner Mountain has agreed to, um, go into a contract with us where they will provide us blood, they will give us the blood. We have to maintain it. Um, there's a lot of rules to maintain. We have the cooler here that we will maintain. This is a, the, the organization, the federal organization that controls blood is called A A B B. The eight, this is A A B B compliant refrigerated cooler. We've been actually demoing it right now, how we'd run it. Once we have live blood, we've been doing it for over two months now and it's had no issues. It's been smooth, cause we have to be within a certain temperature range. And we actually have notifications set that if this goes out of temperature, everybody gets notified to fix it, so we don't ruin the blood. Um, but what we're gonna do is, uh, one of the ways that San Antonio runs is they run it, have a supervisor carrying the blood. Because it's highly regulated, blood is probably, I always tell people, blood's probably more regulated than even narcotics. That we want to have our supervisors, our battalion chiefs carrying the blood. Cause most major traumas, who goes on it? Not one ambulance goes to battalion chief on major traumas. They're the ones that, major car crashes, they're the ones going on it. Um, so they will have the blood there for all our ambulances, for all our crews. We've been training all of our crews how to administer the blood. Um, it's very similar to an IV setup, but little differences, but we can train all of our crews. Um, so that way, every crew, once the B C arrives, they can load up that patient, give them blood and diesel fuel and get them to a surgeon and prevent them from going irreversible shock, which will give them the best chance of survival. Um, and then we're gonna rotate the blood. A bag of blood here that we've been using will last from out of arm to expires twenty-one days. Um, and Inner Mountain also would like to use that, but if we don't use it, so we're, we have a, uh, part of the agreement, part of the contract is we will have the blood for seven days. And if we don't use it within seven days, they'll have a courier come out and rotate us new blood and we give them the old blood. And that blood then goes in the front of their stock to use it that when they have a trauma come in. Um, that way the, we're not wasting the blood. Um, and we feel that, um, our, our current data shows that we'll be administering blood at least one to two times a month. And those are patients that previously did not receive that blood and we're hoping that they got, they did not cause any other problems downstream. But that's kind of what we're hoping to accomplish today is to get this contract signed, um, so that we can enter this agreement, uh, with an amount of the very blood. Any questions?
Questions? So what type of blood?
Great question. So we're gonna be carrying O, uh, O, low titer, O positive blood. O is the universal blood. Now we carry O negative as a universal donor, however, with O positive, low titer, pretty much ninety, upper ninety to ninety, I forgot the exact percentages, can receive it. Now, there was, um, like in, in San Antonio, they were talking about the biggest issue with using, with blood, especially with women of childbearing years, there's an issue that causes R H factor going into effect. The good news is if that happened, that can be treated afterwards. Cause, um, a lot of blood services are nervous about giving certain women of childbearing years, certain blood. But you can't treat death. Once they're got dead, you can't treat them. So the idea is that this will keep, keep, it's the universal blood, universal O positive, this low titer, O positive blood that will be administering. Low titer means that it has low amount of antigens, so things that don't attack your body. So it's universal blood, so that has oxygen carrying capacities and that's what will be administering. Good question.
How many units will you carry?
We only carry one initially. Uh, Inner Mountain, uh, the contract, uh, has one in the contract right now. What we're hoping to expand this, if it comes out more, be more units of blood, wanting to blow out five hundred cc's of blood. But we're looking at possible of, of expanding that if it's, it turns out to be more successful.
So is that one unit of blood for the city or per station?
For the city.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that chief needs to get there quick.
Exactly. And the other good news is like, let's say, it takes time to package the patients. I guess it takes more time to get there, cause essentially this cooler can stay, it's right now, keeping temperature right now. It can be unplugged for four days. So once they arrive, they can put that cooler right into the ambulance and load the patient up and get going and administer it while they're driving. Like some people, like for example, helicopter services, they can't, they have to do all their stuff on the ground and then load up and go, or we can do all of our procedures while we're transporting to our destination. So it's kind of a, we don't need to stop, we don't need to stay in play, we can treat them while we're moving.
And it has a keypad on the front, so I'm taking it's locked?
It's not locked.
Oh.
It's not locked.
That's not a keypad?
Not a keypad, it's just, that's the, the face of it to tell you the temperature. Like if it goes out of temperature, uh, it is a refrigerator, so it can't, it's be set at level or it will alarm. Yeah, that's about it. We have in there, there's actually a local, um, company that called a tepstick that we use in there and will notify us if anything is out of temperature. Cause they were very concerned about that. So we actually give IMC their transfusion lab access to our temperatures, so they can confirm that we are keeping all, their blood staying good and cool.
So that's how they're confident I can use it?
Exactly.
They rest in time, okay.
When we were first approaching this, we were trying to, um, copy the same way San Antonio does with their cooler, they do a different cooler. Um, but I, that's the same cooler that Lifeflight uses and AirMed uses and we're like, oh, we'll do the same thing. But we found out that IMC does not even allow Lifeflight to pack their own coolers, because that cooler is packed every twenty-four hours. Where this one, you don't need to change, like change the ice out, change, it's a refrigerator, so it maintains the temperature by itself. So it's been very beneficial to have that.
Well. Well, I'm highly impressed. You guys came up with this. When I was reading the packet, it was half mind blown, so thank you.
Yeah, uh, thank, you're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Were there any questions from the council on tonight's agenda? Okay, we'll go on to our public hearings for the twenty eighth. And we'll turn the time over to Chief Jacobs for our acceptance of a grant.
Good afternoon. Today I'm here before you with the request for application and, um, actual, we've been promised the funds, so if we apply, then they'll give them to us. So application and receipt of, of, uh, grant fundings from Utah Commission on Criminal and Juvenile Justice. Um, we would be sub recipients of their JAG grant, their Justice Assistance Grant, which may sound familiar to some of you, we receive a JAG grant. But, uh, the Justice Assistance Grant has local, a local arm and it also has a state arm. So this is the state arm, state of Utah received it. And this is a, uh, a sub recipient, uh, funding source for, for this particular grant. We're requesting fifteen thousand dollars for our cops and cleats program. Um, six thousand dollars of it would be for supplies, primarily the T-shirts that we give the kids. And then nine thousand dollars is for the contract service for the training that's brought in by the professional groups that, that come and do that. And, uh, D C J J has, uh, requested that the mayor's signature be on that, so here we are before you presenting and requesting permission to apply for this.
Any questions for Chief Jacobs?
There are also private donations that come in for cops and plates or is this covered?
Uh, it's either this or, uh, we get creative with other, uh, areas of the budget. Um, we've also used some beer tax money for it, cause we use an alcohol educational component along with it, so.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Steve Lehman will present the next two items. The second item, application S A four twenty twenty five will also cover resolution twenty-five, one sixty on the consent agenda. As well as the only item on this special redevelopment agency meeting that we will review later in the agenda. Mr. Lehman.
Thank you, mayor. Hello, council, Steve Lehman with planning and zoning. This first application is a request from West Valley Land Holdings LLC on property just north of City Hall. Um, the council may recall in twenty twenty-three, we did a subdivision, uh, for Wasatch. Uh, the primary purpose of that was to dedicate right of way along Lehman Avenue to create the lot upon which the police station is built. And some other modifications to property lines. After a couple of years, they are putting together their land plan as they start to want to develop this property. And so this is the subdivision that is before you. The purpose for the application, as you know, we don't bring subdivisions to council anymore, but there is a small segment along twenty-seven hundred west that we need to vacate. So we'll show you that in just a moment. So this is just a zoomed inversion, as you well know, the property is vacant. Uh, the one thing that's different about this application compared to the previous is that the two banks, US Bank and the Zions Bank are now included in the boundary of the subdivision. So the next slide, I just took an area or just took a, a shot of the, the property you're all familiar with. The next slide is the original subdivision. So this portion down here was the dedication of Lehman. Uh, the lot one here was the police station. Lot three was the old public safety building and lot two was the main entrance into the project as well as parking. You'll notice that the two corner pieces here were not included and nor was the property to the north up along twenty-seven hundred west. So the next slide is the proposed subdivision. And I'm gonna have you go to the next slide if I could. Shows a little bit better what we're doing. So on this slide, north is to the, my, or to your left. So, um, where to start? So up along twenty-seven hundred, you have a deceleration lane that comes off of thirty-five hundred south, just beyond the Starbucks piece. This little section right here that is shaded is an area that we need to vacate. And so that is why the application needs to be presented before the city council. Since we're here, we'll just discuss the subdivision in and of itself. The large lot here next to City Hall is future development pad. Lot two, up along twenty-seven hundred, the council has reviewed a potential development application, um, in a development agreement from Steve Pastrick for the Starbucks. Lot one is now included as a potential, uh, sellable lot. And then the rest of this property is just the main entrance and also parking. So, once again, this application is just to vacate this small section of right of way. I asked the question, how this come to be in talking with their engineering folks? We believe that was the main entrance into the old Toys R Us Staples site. That was part of the right of way. That's the only thing that we can figure why that piece was held out, so we're just vacating that. When development on lot two comes in, the existing improvements that are out there will just be extended to the north and then we'll tie into the main entrance into the office tower property, so. That is this application.
Any questions on this one? Okay, seeing none, let's move to twenty-five thirty-one.
Okay, so this next application is a request from the redevelopment agency. So a few months ago, uh, finance contacted our office and explained that they are trying to clean up some properties that are in the RDA ownership. Well, that probably shouldn't be, and this was one of them in addition to another, uh, few pieces that were already deeded over to the city. So as we started to look into this, uh, this property is actually developed as part of the promenade. And so it should not be in the RDA's ownership, should be in West Valley City's ownership. So the next slide is just a zoomed in version. All of the property here is part of the promenade, uh, that was developed by the city. Uh, these lots were originally platted as part of the Lehman subdivision that was developed in nineteen fifty-five. And I believe the next slide is the actual subdivision plat, if I recall. Um, this is lots thirty-four through forty-four and a portion of forty-five that will be affected. The reason that this application is before the council is because there's a five foot public utility easement that runs along the back of these lots. And if we can bring up the subdivision plat, uh, you'll see that. There we go. So I know this is, well, at least for me, it's pretty zoomed out. Uh, the lots that are shaded here in yellow are the original lots of the Lehman subdivision. Um, and along the back of this, there is a five foot public utility easement that needs to be vacated. Uh, the next slide, as you're familiar, this is the promenade, beautiful property. I just took one picture just across the, the piece that's been developed. And then the next slide is the subdivision plat itself. So what we're doing is consolidating and condensing all of the lots that were planted as into one lot. And we're vacating this little remnant that runs through the property here as a five foot public utility easement. So that is the request for the subdivision. Um, any questions on that part? I'll just kind of combine everything into one, so, um, so the RDA will, will deed over the property to the city. And so those, those are the reasons for the ordinances. It proves the amendment of the lots that we just talked about. And then the resolution allows the city council to accept a warranty deed from the redevelopment agency. And then the next item on the redevelopment agency is simply for the RDA to convey the warranty deed to the city. I did ask our, um, call Jason Erickson and asked why this was being done so late in the game. And the only thing that we could come up with is that at one time there was discussion that the promenade would be built and extend further to the west. And so maybe back in the day, um, there was thought that maybe we would clean all of that up at the same time. Uh, Jason wasn't here, well, he was here, but probably not. Greg Cudworth was the, the parks planner at the time. Uh, so that's the reason we think this wasn't done before this time. So this just cleans this up and will put the property ownership into West Valley City's name.
Okay, any final questions for Steve? Okay, thank you. All right, we'll go to our resolutions and begin with twenty-five dash one fifty-one and turn the time over to Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Brock Anderson with planning and zoning. So this is a request for a resolution that would authorize the city to enter into a professional services agreement with Houseel Levine Associates LLC to perform a comprehensive update of the city's general plan. So just as a little background reasons for doing an update, so the last comprehensive update started in two thousand and seven and was adopted in two thousand and nine. And then there was some minor updates to that, started in two thousand and thirteen and finalized in two thousand and fifteen. Some major changes that have occurred since two thousand and fifteen would be the completion of the Mountain View Corridor, the construction of interchanges on Bangator Highway. The property swap between Northrop Grumman and Kennicott, which is about a thousand acres of property that can now be developed. The construction of approximately thirty-seven hundred housing units, the construction of approximately five point seven million square feet of industrial space. Major increases in housing values and rents and the surge in remote work brought on by the pandemic. So we put out an R F P and we got, uh, nine submittals, which we were pleased with how many we received. Um, and felt like we could be a little more selective since we've had so much to choose from, so. In the end, uh, well, we evaluated, there were seven criteria that we evaluated the R F Ps by. And, uh, Houseel Levine came out on top. So, um, some of the reasons we selected Houseel Levine was that they had the most depth of experience, uh, preparing general plans both outside and in Utah. We wanted a, a big, a large portion of this new plan to have an economic development focus. And we felt like their consultant, Tischler Base was, had the best credentials and experience in that area. And then we liked their approach to public outreach, which included interactive online maps, stakeholder interviews, focus groups and business community workshops. So any questions?
To the council? Are they, uh, Utah?
They're actually a national firm out of, uh, Chicago, but they have offices throughout the country. I think their closest one is in Montana to us.
They, have they done things in West Valley before that?
Not in West Valley, they've done a couple other places in, like right now, they're working on a general plan for Logan City, I know. So we've reached out to others, they've worked with and had positive feedback and recommendations.
And what's the timing for completing this contract?
So I believe the contact, uh, contract says, um, twenty months, so we anticipate about eighteen months and then a couple months in case to wrap things up. But yeah, it'll be quite an extensive process, lots of public input and requests for public, yeah.
Will the council work with them as it goes along?
Yes, so in the scope, um, yeah, right off the bat, they're gonna come in and have a meeting with the city council and planning commission. And then they're gonna meet with, I believe, department heads, we're gonna do a staff city tour with, with them to start off, so. And then, uh, regular updates, I believe, throughout the process, coming back to update the council on how things are going, so.
Is this a full rewrite of the general?
Yes, it'll be a completely new, new document, new, new everything, yeah.
This is, I was a priority number one for staff, was approved in the budget. We talked about how, you know, the city being at a crossroads, and I, I'm just saying what we already said earlier, but just as a reminder, uh, we're all really excited about having a playbook, you know, for the next twenty years of, of where this city should be. So this, this is, this is kind of kind of a big deal. I know this is, especially from a planning side. Um, so it's not just the typical general plan that we're expecting from them, it's really sort of a comprehensive plan that looks at, you know, where we, where we head, and it, it does start from the council. But we're also, I think it's also gonna be town hall meetings and charrettes. And it's a two-year, maybe a two-year process, very, uh, engaged. Um, we, we can talk about this later, but we also discuss having steering committees appointed by council, you know, just to get as much input, this is, the hope is that this, this is the vision, this is the plan that'll take us to the next twenty years, through the next twenty years of, of West Valley.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. All right, we'll now go to resolution twenty-five, one fifty-two to amend the, approve an executive order to amend the personal and policies and procedure manual for the city. Turn the time over, Ms. Melgar. There you go, looking the wrong way for you.
Good evening, um, so we're.
Good evening. So we're today proposing to change some policies and introducing a new one. But we just want to make sure that it's just a cleanup to make sure that our manual reflects what we actually do with the city. So our first. Proposal is to change the probationary period for the fire department to include the academy. So it would go from one year to fifteen months and. Here's the language that we're changing. So as you see on the bottom, it's a fifteen month probation period. The police department already does something like that where their academy is included within the probation. So we're just updating the fire department to reflect the same. We're also adding HR to the nepotism policy. We feel it gives us. Impartiality and integrity in what we do when other family members and household members are not working within the same city, which. Why still you all? So now we're just including ourselves on it. So that's the only change. That we are proposing for this policy. We recently had an audit with URS and they asked us to clarify some tier two language. And so we proposing this. Employment classification where tier two that serve on boards or commissions are not qualified are not eligible for benefits and under the URS. And then this is our newly proposed paid parental leave policy. And a lot of our employees have been looking forward to this, and so we're happy to have work with Efo and John to bring this to you. This allows for. Parental leave for four weeks of paid parental leave for the birth bonding and care of a newborn. Or for the placement bonding and care of a newly adopted or fostered child. It includes mom and dads, so parental, not maternal. And so these. Things I couldn't put the whole language of the policy, have it in your packages, but I can put it all there. So some of the things is that it would run concurrent with FMLA and it would be for the four weeks. And then. Also that the four weeks would need need to be used within the first three months after the birth fostering or adoption of a child. So. So we feel like these changes would better reflect what we do here in the city and also. That the parental leave policy would take care of our employees and when our employees feel like they can take care of their families, they come to work and they feel like this better and they're happy here. So. We would ask you to please adopt this policy. You have any questions on this?
Any questions? No, thank you. All right, we'll now go to resolution twenty five one fifty three. We'll turn the time over to Chief Evans for the purchase of personal protective equipment.
Next slide. These are the the turnout gears, we call them, for structured firefighting. It includes coats, pants, boots. This is to purchase nine sets. Of new gear and these are for the new. And replacement employees that we we've put on. Like everything else, they really go up in price every time. So. Think when it says fire right behind it, it just goes up a little bit. So. This is to purchase the nine. We're purchasing this from Fire Supply Company, which is on. The Metro Fire Purchasing Agreement, so we get a little bit better price.
Any questions? Okay, perfect. Thank you. All right, the next two resolutions, twenty five one fifty four and twenty five one fifty five. We'll turn the time over to Ms. Young. It's regarding purchase of playground equipment.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Jamie Young, Parks and Recreation Director. I'm excited to present these two resolutions to you today. So about a little over a year ago, probably the summer of twenty four. A local playground company, Big T Recreation, came to me and offered an opportunity to have a private foundation donate some money to the city to replace a playground. And so, you know, of course, you know, we're always interested in in some extra funding for for playground replacement. So. There the first agreement is to accept a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar donation. To from a foundation called the Integrity Foundation, and their mission is to enhance the lives of. Of people through things like park, park improvements and playgrounds and things like that to to better communities where where they're where people live. So the first resolution is to accept the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. There are very few strings attached to that money. We will work closely with the foundation and they will have some people fly in from their headquarters in Texas, as well as some of their local. Local companies that they work with to. Help with the final installation of of the of the playground. And by that, I mean they'll kind of attach some of the slides and. Attach some final pieces under the direction of the playground installer. So so it'll still be, it'll still be safe and it'll be under the direction of the of the playground company. So. So that is the first resolution is to accept the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar donation. Are there any specific questions about that? Yes, sir?
The agreement mentioned, I don't remember how many volunteers, but volunteers coming in from the company. Does the donation cash or in kind or?
It's cash.
And are the volunteers supervised, I'm assuming by that company and not city staff or combination?
So they mostly will be supervised by the playground installation team. That's what they're coming in for is to help with those final installation pieces. There will be a few other things that they'll help with, like, you know, checking people in and providing lunch and things. So that will be under the direction of the. Of the Integrity Foundation, but the the actual acceptance of the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars is cash. And then the that's part of what they like to do is come and. Help with the final pieces of installation and and take pictures and have that be part of 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 how they promote their their foundation to show what what they're doing to make the communities better that they. That they do these projects in.
And then this might be on the next one, but the signage. On the playground, that perpetuity, does that remain as long as this? Playground is there or?
Yeah, we would make sure that it stayed to acknowledge their contribution to the playground. And so if if something happened to it and were damaged, we would replace it. Yeah. We we are excited about the the two hundred and fifty thousand donation. We're we're excited to. Make sure that they get recognition for that donation to us.
So I'm curious of your math there. Cost is six thirteen. Our cost is two thirteen.
Yes.
What's the difference?
So the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar donation is is from this foundation. We also were awarded a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from CDBG. And then the two thirteen would be the balance that the city would pay. And in your packet, this is a one image of it, but it's a pretty awesome playground. So I think it will be very well received by by the community that uses, and this is Parkway Park. I don't know if.
How did you decide Parkway Park?
Parkway is one of the next ones on our on our list. And they they like to primarily focus in kind of low income areas. And so that's Parkway was selected for that reason, being a regional park and in that in that area.
Anything else you wanted to say about one fifty five or?
Nothing, nothing else for that one.
So what are possibilities of getting future donations for future park equipment?
Well, we really hope to knock this out of the park so that we can continue with this with this foundation specifically. But that we have other opportunities down the road for for something similar to this, that that it's well publicized, that this was a great partnership that we had with the Integrity Foundation, so that we could. Potentially secure this again in the future with them or potentially with others. Big T Recreation has has said that they've had other people approach them to do something similar. And I I know he he's excited to work with us and excited about how. Willing the city has been with, you know, with the agreements and different things. And so I think we definitely have a good opportunity to to secure some some additional grants and or donations in the future.
And then just, this doesn't really apply to this other than for parks. We were doing a study of all of our parks. Do you know where that is?
Yep, we we are, we expect to have that wrapped up by the end of the year. We're doing a variety of different things. Some. Some surveys will be going out and some focus groups will be scheduled in the next couple of weeks. And we'll and we're moving forward with that. Yep, we expect to have that some report done by the end of the calendar year.
So six hundred and thirteen thousand on something right here. Is that the photo you showed to us or more equipments from there?
That's the cost of the playground equipment and installation and the surfacing. That's the total cost of that from the playground company.
I mean, we purchased the land?
It's the existing Parkway Park. So it's just replacing the playground there.
And then the photo we did is shown to us?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome. So the second agreement is to award the contract for six hundred and thirteen thousand dollars to Big T Recreation. Obviously, the fact that the donation came through them, we did not do an RFP for the playground, but Big T Recreation is on the state contract. So, you know, we we've done a little bit of work with them over the years. We haven't. You know, we we try to spread the the playground purchases out among a couple of different vendors, but. They've been, they've been great to work with and brought this opportunity to us. And so. We we asked to approve the agreement to award the contract to them for the new playground purchase and installation.
Any questions on that part? All right, thank you.
Great, thank you.
All right, we'll now turn the time over to Mr. Thomas for the next four resolutions. So we have twenty five. One fifty six, one fifty seven, one fifty eight, one fifty nine.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Craig Thomas, Community Engagement Culture Director. Six years ago, former Assistant City Manager came to me and asked me to come down to her office and talk to her for a little bit about a new program. Which was my hometown. So for about six years, we've been running my hometown now. We are in our sixth year. The vision was always to have community resource centers as part of my hometown. She asked me if I had any thoughts on it. I pulled out a document for her and said, yeah, I have lots of thoughts on that. This is great. So fast forward, it's almost six years. We've been working with the LDS Church for about a year now on these three buildings. So we have a unique opportunity to purchase three buildings from the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter Day Saints. I'll show you a map in a little bit. It shows you where they're located. But basically, the purpose of these community resource centers and these buildings to increase resident access to resources. Not just the classes, but also resources. Do they have access to opioid training? Do they have access to driver's license training? Do they have access to immigration information? All things that can be a little bit limiting when you're only using a LDS church house two days a week. Or one day a week. We have one CRC that's only open one day a week. Build and strengthen our sense of community pride. I think it's done that. I think these buildings will continue to do that. Expand our My Hometown Community Resource Center programming. Instead of being open Tuesdays and Thursdays in three buildings. We'll be able to be open seven days a week if we have the. Resources and volunteers. Provide additional spaces, spatial needs for the city programming. One, one of these buildings actually comes with a very large property attached to it. Which offers us a great, unique opportunity to provide another recreation point for Parks and Recreation. And as well as overflow programming for Parks and Recreation within the gymnasiums of these three buildings. So great win for us there. And then we're also preserving historic buildings within the city. Three buildings that are pretty significant to the community for community members. Anybody that grew up in West Valley knows the Lighthouse Building. Anybody that lived in the Hillsdale area knows that building. I know the Whitehall Building because I went there. So I mean, it's they're they're significant pieces of our city's history. So the buildings are the Whitehall Building, just off of thirty two hundred West, about thirty Whitehall. Should look that one up. Thank you. Hillsdale Building, kind of just right here to the north of us a little bit, and then the Lighthouse Building. Currently, the Hillsdale Building is being used as a community resource center. The Lighthouse Building is not, nor is the Whitehall Building. So these are our existing My Hometown areas in West Valley. Right now, we reach about forty eight percent of West Valley City households. In the next year. That went really dark on this presentation, sorry. With the expansion into the gray areas, I don't know if you can tell that on this map. We'll be reaching fifty one percent of West Valley City households in the next year. The darker lines are kind of how we're going to be dividing up the city into districts or regions. So we have a Granger section, a Valley View section, an Ocker section, and a Hunter section. These three CRC buildings are indicated by the red stars. The one building we're not purchasing is Scottsdale. That is the one building that has the greatest limitations and only open on Thursdays. As you can see, these three buildings will function very well for our community and location. I don't know what else I wanted to say on that one, but I'll probably think about it later. Just to give you an idea of your sees, the current attendance and total number of students that have gone through a CRC. Between January and June this year, not individual students, but in the classrooms. On the Tuesdays and Thursdays or the Thursdays. We've had fourteen thousand students in a classroom. Some of them are repeats of, obviously. We're averaging seventy four students a night. In the CRCs. We're hoping to bump that up a little bit, but right now it's seventy four a night. In total, we have two hundred and thirty six volunteers running the four CRCs. With accumulated twenty two thousand hours of volunteer service to the community. So these CRCs are high functioning centers. They are centers of connection. They're centers of. Value to the residents and to the neighborhoods, and they're providing a great resource to our community. So what's the buildings? The buildings, the three buildings we're purchasing would be demolished or not. Decommissioned. They would be decommissioned by the LDS Church. That means removing the steeple, removing the baptistry, removing signage. So it basically looks like any other building on the street, other than it does kind of look like a church still. There's some have a steeple. We we have, I believe, talked to the LDS Church into not touching the lighthouse building steeple because it's not really a steeple. It really is just more of a lighthouse, right? As part of the agreement, we are responsible for fifty thousand dollar earnest building, earnest money per building. Each building will have a two thousand dollar lease per month. The earnest money and the lease payments will be applied towards the final payment. Purchase. And then the closing deadline is within twenty four months of the agreement being signed. So the Whitehall Building, just here on thirty two hundred West, was built roughly nineteen sixty five. It's two point eight six acres and we purchased for two point one million. The Hillsdale Building. We tried to find numbers on this, but there's a lot of weird numbers on the. Sometime between nineteen fifty eight and nineteen sixty five, depending on what records you look at. Two point one six acres and two point three million. And then the Lighthouse Building. Again, one of those. Document issues at this county, I guess, between nineteen forty six and nineteen fifty eight.
It was built in forty six.
There we go. Okay, got a testimonial nineteen forty six slash the fifty eight. It's sitting on six point three five acres and will be two point five five. So that is the first three resolutions for the purchase of these buildings. The final one is just an addendum. Yes.
Transfer. Possession take place.
That would be dependent on signing the documents, getting them to the church, and then they will insert the timeline of when the buildings will be vacated. The Whitehall Building has already been vacated. It is sitting empty. The Lighthouse and the Hillsdale Building are both vacant still, or still occupied. They need to relocate stake offices and ward units. They do have a plan in place for both of those buildings to do that here within the next few months.
And we did make it known to them that we'd like. To be ready to move in by the first of the year and that we would need time to get that building ready. So really, I think it, as I said, but right after that, like Craig was saying, as soon as we get this. Moving, we can start working on it.
And get started and keep being pastured every week.
Yes. We will, we will move as quickly as we can, depending on the church's schedule. We will, we will move as quickly as we can, uh depending on the church's schedule. Uh the final resolution was just an addendum, uh modifying the agreement that we have with the LDS Church. Basically, we're no longer um occupying buildings that they own, but we're occupying buildings that we own. So it's just a resolution to amend that uh rest agreement with them.
Any questions, Mr. Thomas?
Want to go first?
Well, I was just curious if we have. From a financial perspective, a plan to to do this without. Covering taxpayers further, is there, we have capacity, I guess, to to take on this?
Yeah, but right now, I mean, it would be going back to the to the coffers if we. Um there would be looking at bond as options for it. So what we want to do is figure out, that's why we appreciate the time to be able to figure it, figure it out for these next two years. I mean, we've we've talked about some creative ways of getting revenue for the city, but essentially, we would have to go back to the. City coffers to be able to get get the funds. We talked about grants, you know, available to uh that'd give us time to look. Look through that two years, especially if we have something running that provides that. But that's, yeah, that's really all we have right now.
So I have several questions. Um you mentioned the volunteers from these facilities, usually two days a week. So how do we plan on staffing it for seven days a week with volunteers?
Yes, so we're looking at expanding existing classes already. Um if you look at our sewing class alone. Between the four CRCs, there's roughly seventy um students on wait lists. They can't even get into classes. So the CRC directors are actively looking for additional volunteers to help. Um a number of volunteers are interested in actually just working for the four nights a week. Um so uh we would be looking at creative programming to maybe shift some classes so they have more time in the building. Or to consolidate possibly some of the classes that are held at Scottsdale, you know, on the street to Lighthouse. Uh using Scottsdale more as a satellite for the essential classes needed for that neighborhood. Uh but then classes that could be pinpointed to a greater audience would be located into one of the other buildings.
So would we be relying on volunteers from the CRC for seven days a week, or would we have to do something? I mean, through the church program?
Primarily through the CRC. Yeah, but we would be looking at um. We'll be looking at what is needed as far as parks and recreation for maintaining the grounds. We're looking at facilities and what will be made required to maintain the buildings themselves.
So the city will be responsible for maintenance?
Correct.
I know the Lighthouse has a lot of improvements, so we're having to pay for those, the city. Do we have a cost on that yet?
Well, Jake's kind of been through the building already, but this is, after this, we'll go and do a. A thorough, he'll go and do a thorough analysis of what that would be.
Um and then how did we arrive at the purchase price, these properties? If remind me, if we've talked about it before, remind me again. I don't think we have.
Yeah, that that was the price that was presented to us.
Didn't we negotiate at all?
Yeah, as much as we we could, when we looked at the, we look at the purchase price, just the value of the land, it's really hard to. It's hard to leverage anything to to negotiate from our end, when we're looking at the. Just the market value of that, the property and the land itself. Um I think, I mean, just the six acres alone.
Right.
Will probably warrant five, six million dollars.
Yeah, I'm just curious because I would expect that the six acre property would be significantly higher than the others, but it's not. And then I like the, I mean, I I like the option of leasing for a couple of years. So what if we get a couple of years down the road and we go, this is a bust. This isn't going to work. What options do we have, if any? Do we forfeit our fifty thousand earnest money? Do we, but we can walk away if we wanted to?
Yeah, we can walk away, then we do forfeit that fifty thousand.
Okay.
Couple of questions there. I think this one would be a good deal, to be honest with you. Because the leasing is uh two years and you put it to tourist for the uh the purchase price. It's awesome, and it's fifty thousand dollars for three properties. It's a wonderful. Just highlight that. I don't know, I just throw some idea out there, and maybe you can jump, you guys can jump in and help me out. To call a theater in Sandy area, you know, that one, they run by. Donation, well, donation money, which group big donors. And they travel everywhere and they get all, they get, they get money from Utah. Inside Utah, outside Utah, and the builder, I think, why don't we just do something, we copy that model? We can do something like that, because this is the most things that very, very much have people here in our city, kind of volunteers, everything. Like you said, people that volunteer to teach uh English class, read guitar class and piano class. So why don't we just run something that have one person to get all, you know, donors and then. Purchase that, and the rest of that we can pay from our city. You know, uh theater, they did, they did that. They've been doing that. Um they moved to Sandy and they have a big group. They go to Scotland, go to Europe everywhere, and they try to sit down to do how to run the theater and they get the money in. I think we try to do something like that.
Yeah, certainly. So we, we've talked about like several, like you said, different creative ways. We also talked about leasing some space to nonprofits there. Throughout the, throughout the week, um the chapel to certain. Turn the congregations that are looking for space on Sundays where we, you know, where we could keep it, keep it open then. There's also. And there's foundations that provide funding, even my hometown, meeting with some of the my hometown individuals, they're, they're already ramping up fundraising. Like, I don't know, you can speak to that, Craig, but looking at ways to fundraise more for the program. I think once, once we, if we can get it under control, get the the facility under our control. We can put more, more effort and time into to finding solutions. But the two years gives us that runway, gives us a little bit of. Time for, but yeah, we we would lose, you know, we run the risk of losing the the fifty thousand. For each of them, and I like the fact that we separate them out, so that maybe, maybe two work, you know, maybe, maybe one works. Figure it out from there.
So City Strong is the nonprofit organization that's been set up um as part of my hometown, Utah. Um they are ramping up um donations and grants. Um they are actively approaching businesses and organizations. Here, just within the last four months, I think they've raised around sixty thousand dollars just dedicated to West Valley City programs alone. So my hometown, Utah acknowledges and recognizes the need to help fund as well, so they are actively pursuing donors and grants.
I see in the lease agreement, uh permitted uses. I just wonder if, I didn't see anywhere in there if there's a deed restriction once we purchase it. Maybe that's a question for Eric.
We had discussed, well, Eric, you want to?
Go ahead. We, we did talk with the church a lot about all of this stuff.
Yeah, there were certain restrictions that. You know, alcohol, pornography, those types of things that the church would not like it to be used for, but you know, when, when, as we've gone back and forth. In our own community buildings, as a community building, uh we won't allow those things anyway. You know, one of our concerns, when we first got the language back, was that. You know, another plus to this was being able to use it for others, other recreation. You know, even using the Culture Hall, the ju- the gym to run some junior jazz games, you know, the the field to run tournaments. So that, that was the other thing I know we all talked about, you know, even, you know, talked about it as a council to be able to. To have it a multipurpose for the city. And that was, that was what we pushed back on.
There's no, no deed restrictions save ten years from now, we just, you know, my hometown changes and goes away. We could sell it and no restriction on the.
For, for most, no, there's not.
So you were thinking about um seeing, city gonna, you know. Expand, you know, do more, may- maybe, you know, fifty percent in the future, right? Uh that year, so. Kind of future things. Are we thinking about maybe in the future, we can buy more, purchase more. From other places in our city, you know, the the buildings, they don't use it, and we can, you have that kind of plan or?
Well, these three buildings happen to fall within um their plan to liquidate buildings in our existing My Hometown areas. They are not currently in works and consolidating other stakes and wards on the end of the city. Um I mean. I can't speak to five years from now. Uh maybe my hometown gets a five million dollar grant. We want to do something more. But um as my hometown thinks more and more um as a city, uh days of service will likely be. Exported to all areas of the city next year, not just within the My Hometown boundaries. Uh the CRC classes already are open to anybody within the community. They are not limited to geography. Um so we are looking at ways of trying to connect with the hundred percent of the city, not just the fifty-one percent.
See, no other, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, we'll go to our consent agenda. We have the. Um expected deed from the RDA that Mr. Lehman already presented to us earlier. We also have appointments to the Clean and Beautiful Committee. Are there any questions on those two items?
How long do the appointments go to the Clean and Beautiful?
Four years, four years.
Many members are on the Clean and Beautiful.
Um right now, I think, how many vacancies are there on the Clean and Beautiful? We have a possibility of seventeen. There's, so we have twelve members now and five vacancies.
So, so these, these aren't filling vacancies, they're just.
No, just reappointments.
Appointments, okay.
We would love to fill the other vacancies though. Pardon?
I have a candidate for you.
Oh, great. Yeah. We'll take them. Alright, is there um any of the resolutions you wanted to move to the consent agenda? They're all pretty substantial, so. Okay, nobody's piping up, so we'll just leave it as is. Okay, and then um. We have the review of the agenda. The only item on the RDA meeting is the conveyance of the deed to the city. That Mr. Lehman spoke of, so I don't know if you want to review that any further, or we'll get on that. Okay, good on that one. So let's get that. And go to communications items, and we'll turn the time over to Ms. Kidd. And our Healthy West Valley Committee update.
Hello. I was waiting, I gotta clear my throat. Um yes, my name is Alex Kidd. I'm the manager for Neighborhood Services. You probably already know Neighborhood Services oversees quite a few committees. Um and you get to see lots of exciting things like Clean and Beautiful Yard Awards, and veterans are going to be doing their dinner next month. Um Healthy West Valley tends to do things like behind the scenes, and so I always like to come and give you guys. Little update on things that they're doing. Um and they've been busy. Um so if you remember, back in June, we came to you and um asked for you to approve a grant. The OD two A grant um for twenty thousand dollars. And it was a very quick turnaround. We are just about finished up with the grant. Um and this grant was to provide opioid education to the community, and I just wanted to let you know some of the successes that we had. And give you some beautiful brochures. Um so just a few things that the grant was able to accomplish. Um we did create um some materials for reading. Um like I said, we have the opioid brochure, and this was just an opportunity to educate. Everyone and anyone in West Valley about what opioids are, what an overdose is, um and what resources are available to them. We did print this in English and Spanish, which is excellent for our community since we have so many Spanish speakers. And then we also created a toolkit, which is basically the much more extended version of this brochure. Goes into a ton of details. It's about thirty-six pages. Um but we wrote it in a way that is pretty comprehensible for the average community member. And it goes into so much more detail about what opioids are, um why they're prescribed, what their benefits are, what their dangers are. Um and different resources like naloxone and other things like that that are available in the community. And that toolkit is currently printed in English and was sent today for Spanish printing, so we're very excited about that too. And we plan to have those materials distributed through the Coalition, um which has a ton of different partners. Um so it'll be in clinics, it'll be in community spaces, schools. Um so we just want that to be readily available to everyone. Um not everyone is a reader, so we tried to do a few different types of materials. Um we've created eight videos. Um that will be starting, we're going to be starting posting them next Saturday, which is National Drug Takeback Day. Um and the videos, four of them are completed, um produced for our. Um getting edited right now, thanks to our really awesome communications team. They've been working really hard with us um to complete those. The, the videos are in English, but they are um translated into Spanish, like subtitles. So we tried to make those as accessible as possible, and you'll be seeing those on the Neighborhood Services Facebook and Instagram page. But we'll also have them on the website because not everyone uses social media. Um and then we also completed four different workshops. So this was an in-person learning opportunity because. A lot of people have asked in the community for this exact information, you know, what are opioids, how do we help our community, how do we help ourselves? Um so we offered four. Um we actually had updated from last week when I submitted this, forty people registered. And a total of thirty-four people attend one of those workshops, um which I think is a really great turnout. The very last workshop was in Spanish, and each workshop, we just increased our attendance and our engagement. And the attendees had really great questions and were really appreciative of the materials. They were also able to take the toolkits and the brochures, and each attendee also was given naloxone. Which is something that they learned to use during that workshop. Um and if you don't know what naloxone is, it um. Reverses the effects of an opioid overdose, so very helpful to have on hand. Hopefully, it never has to be used, but. Um a really important tool. And then of those forty people that, uh sorry, thirty-four people who attended, they've all been offered the American Red Cross. CPR and opioid uh training. I know we have six confirmed registered, you know, twelve spots. Um I know we have a couple of people who said they're interested, just haven't got registered yet. Um and that'll be offered next week, so we're pretty excited about that. The training's usually like pretty expensive, um and so we use the grant, you'd be able to pay for that. Um so people were really excited to have that opportunity. And then with our last class, we have actually distributed three hundred and twenty-five naloxone kits. Um throughout the summer at community events, at workshops. Um so we're glad to have that in the community um as a resource, so. Um just wanted to give you a little update on that. It was a lot of work. We had an intern that was part of the grant. Her name was Janet. She was incredible. She crushed it. Um and so we're really glad that we were able to get all these uh materials out, and they'll just be continued to use. We can use the workshop materials and offer them again and again, so um really good resources. But do you have any questions on that?
Any questions?
The question on the three hundred and seventy kits that were distributed, so. Um obviously, that was to people other than those attending.
Yes.
So how are those distributed? How, I mean, did people just request them? Are there any requirements or?
Um so we did receive the kits from the county, um and basically, we were, we were at tabling events, so there was a couple of different events that we did. In July and August. Um and when they came up to the table, we would talk them through how to use it, and naloxone's actually fairly easy to use. Um because we were distributing the nasal um piece instead of, there's. Piece instead of, there's also an injectable um option. Use, um, but uh so we, different, different tabling events, and so. Like we had events at Life Church, at city events, um and that's how we distributed them and just walked them through the process of how to utilize it.
I don't see any more questions, thank you so much.
Yeah, and one other thing about Healthy West Valley, I wanted to give you guys an update on. Um, we have moved to a framework called Communities That Care, so pretty big jump for us. Um, we work very closely with Salt Lake County Health Department as a coalition, um like they work with. Cities all over the the county, um and they've really been encouraging us to use a framework just to be um. Basically more focused um in the work that we do and and use an evidence-based framework so that we're better supporting. The prevention work that we're doing here in the city, um so the. Coalition approved this specific framework, there was a couple different options, but this framework seemed to work. Make the most sense to us, it has a major youth focus, which is something that we've been focusing on over the last few years. Um, but basically we'll go through five phases to identify health problems or risks. In the city and to identify productive factors as well. Um, and then use that information to more effectively do programming and um use data. That's specific to West Valley to support the health and wellbeing. Stephanie, who's here, who's overseeing the Healthy West Valley Coalition now, just finished training last week to be the coordinator. Um, and we did purchase a three years life, three-year license that's gonna provide. Lot of different resources and support as we take on this framework and. Move forward with all of our efforts, so just wanted to provide that information to you as well.
Any questions on that? Thank you. Alright, we'll turn the time over to Mr. Young. Our discussion on inoperable vehicles.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, obviously we say the best for last in operable vehicles. A few weeks ago was brought up about the storage of uh. Inoperable vehicles that are covered with actual car covers. And right now in the ordinance, all we have for inoperable vehicles where they can be stored is either in a garage or barn. Um, carports are not accepted as an enclosed structure, so that's why the actual car covers. Idea was in place so that uh object cars or cars that been damaged can, people can store them on their property. Uh, but there is nothing in the ordinance right now that says where they can be placed. Couple of things that have come up is we, and I have a couple pictures, um. Where certain vehicles are being stored, this one is wrecked, but um. They came into compliance by putting the car cover on, but it's directly in front of the house. So, whoops, don't know what I did. So if um. If we wanted to make a specific place where they can be stored, we would just need to have that written into the uh. Into the ordinance where they can be placed. Any questions on that?
So you're suggesting that we add to the?
Well, just um. You know, as it was brought up, whether you be stored on the side of the home or in the driveway, instead of like you saw in the pictures where. They're putting them directly in front of the house.
So we're talking the text change to the ordinance that would include. Restriction that anything ever by a car cover. This is my thoughts, uh would need to be behind the front elevation of the house.
Right, yeah.
Side yard, backyard. Could be a carport on the side yard, but just couldn't be in the front of the house like your examples.
We're out on the road.
Could be in the driveway. That's.
In front of the house.
Of the side of the house.
Has to be behind the front elevation is how I would like to see it. The whole purpose is. You know, how do we want our neighborhoods to look? And if it's anywhere in the. Front of the garage or the front of the, front elevation, it's not gonna look great. But yet it allows them to have a disabled vehicle that. And maybe a disabled vehicle doesn't look bad, doesn't look like a disabled vehicle, but maybe it does. If it does, then put a car cover on.
Tires, go put it, change the lifters.
Yeah, the part of it right now is that the vehicle, even if it does have the car cover on it, tires have to be inflated. The cover has to be kept in good condition, it can't be torn and. And flopping around, and that's one of the reasons why we don't allow like the normal blue tarts, it actually has to be a car cover.
So do we have enough, at least four that would like to see that text change? I like the suggestion. Yep. So I think that's four.
Right.
Okay.
Hey, wait, 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 wait.
Thought you'd get out so easily.
I tried.
Is it gonna make it easier or harder for you and your group?
Same. Not, not gonna make it any more difficult.
Okay, just wanna make sure we're not. We're thinking, thinking it through.
Alright, we'll go to the council calendar, were there any questions? Okay, we'll go to potential future agenda items.
I don't even know if this is possible, but maybe on one, but on the CRCs. Is it possible to to date a little more into the cost? The lease, monthly lease, the purchase price, I understand that's going, that can go towards it. The renovations and keep the lights on. On a normal operating basis. To just get a fuller picture of the financial impact. Prior to voting, I don't know if the other council.
Good idea.
Yep.
I, I don't need us, we need if, I don't know if we need. An agenda item on it, but uh. With the. Tax increase that the mosquito abatement district is proposing. There's been some changes. Skeet abatement district is. A little gun shy of the tax commission right now.
Okay.
Because the tax commission seems to be uh. Saying there's black and there's white, and we know which is which, but nobody else does. And so. Uh, do we need to bring that up again with their adjustments that they've made in it? In their.
Did they lower it or raise it?
They lowered it, actually.
So that's illegal. So they lowered the amount that John reported the. Tax increase would be, do we need another public hearing?
Well, I'll look into it, my, my gut tells me I wouldn't think we would need to.
We're doing a public hearing.
It's just the information.
It's just the information getting out.
We'll look at, we'll look at.
Apparently. Somebody in the valley forgot to cross one T or dot one I, and they got their tax. Increase withheld.
Oh.
Yeah.
Okay.
This is the one that's gonna go into effect.
Next, next year.
Yeah, next year, we're not, we're holding a public hearing in D.C. But they just wanted to know if we, if we thought we needed to bring it up one more time, just to.
For your report.
Just to be safe with the tax commission.
Then one more thing, I don't know if this is an agenda item, and I probably should have talked to Ethel before, but. When we went to the Utah League City and Towns meeting. And there was this, a session that Scott and Ethel and I were in about how to run city meetings. And um, something I've been wondering all along is why. We don't allow an applicant to address the city council. They can address the um planning commission and all of that, but not city council. So we talked about a little bit, that the information in the meetings that most cities do allow that. And I know we've had some confusion and some frustration on the part of applicants because they felt like they should be given. An opportunity to address the city council, is that an agenda item or is that just an administrative thing?
You know, I don't know if it needs to be, if you all tell me that we, we can do that, we can make that. Especially if, you know, like we talked about um. Having, having that available at study session.
Yes.
It's even easier for us to start that as a policy.
I think it would go a long ways with the applicants, because I think sometimes they don't think we understand. Based on the presentation from staff, so I'm for it. I think it's very beneficial, it was beneficial being on planning commission and hearing the applicant. And where you could specifically ask them questions, so I'm for it, if, if there's four, three other people that are for it.
And, and I mentioned too that that, that is true, that like two other cities, that's what we did, it was, it's uncommon, I think. To not allow it.
Not allow it, yeah.
It's not like they weren't allowed, they could have joined public comment.
Yeah, but they're limited, they're limited to three minutes, and we could limit them here too, maybe five minutes. But I think it'd give us more of an opportunity to have that interaction, question, answer with the applicant.
We talked about the concern being, you know, letting it go forever, but if it's in study session, we have a cap, right, we have to be done with, with study session.
Yeah.
Yeah, we can't be five hour meeting.
So.
Okay.
Um, do we have a? Sorry, I shouldn't run that as that question.
I have a question, what if, what if it's like a controversial issue where there's. There's nearby residents who also would like to have time to, to speak with us. I know they'll get time. Maybe in, in the regular meeting, but so will the applicant, I just. I worry about showing favoritism. To the applicant and not to our. To our nearby residents, I. I don't know if I need to worry about that.
So going from a, yeah, going from a planning commission experience. Um, the applicant was a question and answer, usually the citizen just made a comment.
Yeah, we just listened.
We just listened, so. I don't know, what's your experience on that one, Ethel?
Yeah, I think they, the fact that they're the applicant. Gives them maybe that extra, maybe, I guess the view is that entitles them to be able to. Speak their, their case and even limiting them. In study session, that, that would be a little different for me, which I think resolves. You know, part of that issue, like if you would, if we did it in council meeting, I have had concern from residents in the past that. You know, they get a specific amount of time, we have to do public comment. Uh, whereas in, in work session, like you know, when we had uh. You know, we, we've had the, let's say the theater come and present, it allows for that specific topic that relates to them. It's totally your prerogative who you want to allow to speak, to be honest, it's just, we just have to be consistent. It can't be seen as we're picking and choosing, but the fact that they applied, I don't believe will necessarily, you know, go against anything that, you know.
Yeah, because we do let foundations come, give their presentations and different things. And on planning commission, it's been too long, so we did it in public, oh not study session.
No one could speak in the study session.
It was only in public.
Which like back and forth is more appropriate in a study session, right?
Yeah, it is, because there's not as much back and forth and.
Well, they can be here when staff presents it to us, and then they can add whatever they want to add. You know, and.
One minute to like five minutes.
Then we can have question and answer, or we can discuss it.
We can express our concerns.
Yeah.
And then he's, they can.
He or she, the developer is also welcome to come to public comment and give their three minutes of, you know.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Favor of it.
Yeah.
I am too, I just, we need to be sensitive.
Yeah, I think as, as long as we're consistent. You know. I, and I wouldn't expect a resident to come to the study session as well, I.
Some do.
Some would, if they really care, they would come, but then it's noticing, would we have to notice them, see that's the thing.
We don't notice for.
Actual public things, but we notice.
Or agendas, it's publicized.
Yes, it is publicized, so someone could look on it.
And, and you know, that can be a simple, like I said, I don't think we need, actually, you just tell me, we can have, let staff know that we're gonna allow that, but if.
They won't.
If they want to, to share.
Yeah, sometimes that digs them a big hole they can't get out of.
Can even limit that.
They did though. Yeah, well, and we had a couple of those on planning commission, I do remember, so.
Well, yeah, and you can specifically have a question and answer, and it's helpful.
And they know what we expect.
Yeah.
Better.
Oh, I think, I think it's a good thing.
So I see three. And four. Okay, I.
We want to do a time limit.
I would, I would give them five minutes to just. Fill in the pieces that staff didn't catch that they thought were important.
Were important.
And that's.
They answer any questions. So.
Yeah, but that's gotta be within their five minutes.
Minutes.
Yeah.
Well, and the council could request if.
Can we talk about.
Want to extend the time if we.
We can do that.
If we need more.
We need more. Yep.
Continue negotiating.
Okay, I like that.
I just don't want to turn it into a negotiation. I think it's better to have.
An answer.
Yeah, but not a negotiating, well, if we give you this, we get this, it's just ask the questions, and then if we have, give staff direction to.
We're not going back to you.
Yeah, we're not gonna negotiate here, it's just fill in the holes. And then staff will come back if we have definite.
Yes.
Yeah, if we say no, we don't like this and this.
To me, that's just more of a CYA for us too, that. We're giving them an opportunity.
Yeah.
Say, you didn't even give me a chance, because I did hear that from an applicant this year.
Yeah.
So.
Well, it, it also gives the applicant. The impression of what we're doing, that we're going through staff to do this.
Right, yeah.
What staff brings back to him is what he heard and.
Yeah.
Reinforces our staff.
Yeah. Instead of the reach outs after individually. Okay.
Mayor, I do have one item as well.
Yep.
Um, America will be celebrating its two hundred and fiftieth anniversary. Um, Utah is asking that cities create their own committees. Um, Craig's group is overseeing that and. Just wanted to see if any of you were interested in participating on that, I asked him, he said, uh, be like once a month, maybe. Virtual option, so pretty flexible. I would.
None would like to.
Okay, yeah, awesome, thank you.
Okay, any council reports?
Just, just one from yesterday, uh. We're winding down the mosquito season now, so you shouldn't be getting bit too much anymore, they've pretty much gone into hibernation. However, we did end this year with eight. West Nile virus cases in the state of Utah. Seven of which were in Salt Lake County.
Indian West Nile.
Uh, there were some in the South Salt Lake mosquito abatement district, but I think six of the seven. But they are working on that, they're doing the spring, there's also a new one that's just coming out, they just noticed some ones on. Uh, St. Louis encephalitis. It when, it is even worse than the West Nile, I think we had one case in the state. It was a travel case, so it wasn't from here, but was finding mosquitoes with it. In our final traps, so. We'll be letting you know, and Sam should be getting a. An email from them about that. So.
Publicize?
Yeah. So just for our information that we know something is out there.
Thank you, anybody else?
I attended the uh, community conversation at Hunter High School about the hospital. Yeah, I mean, the, the building is going to be amazing, they're doing it all in one phase now.
Oh, good.
It'll open humans separately, one side versus the other. Um, but they're doing a lot to. Um, but they're doing a lot to. Introduce community involvement, they're, they're bringing programs um to help the. Higher community around, even with, um, one of the concerns from the community was. Helping build well for the residents that live around there, so they're implementing a program where. Residents that live close by can invest in certain projects that. Or, or buildings, um, become a part owner of buildings, so they're doing a lot more than just building a hospital. Was pretty, great meeting, pretty optimistic about what the building, in fact, they're. Putting in a temporary clinic that'll open next spring or summer.
Yeah.
Uh, that can start providing services sooner.
Great.
And they're going to have a food pharmacy. So Jonathan and Willi were sitting there going, what's a food pharmacy, so he, Jonathan asked. So if someone is in there and they've been diagnosed, say, with diabetes, or some, something that they need some specific. Guidance or prescription for food. That was pretty cool.
Nice. Now, I think they're gonna be very involved in the community. Okay. Not seeing any others, we do have need for a closed session for pending litigation for our quarterly update. I think we have time for that, so if somebody would make that motion, and then we can adjourn.
Motion to move. Close session for pending litigation, no other topics to be discussed, we'll adjourn after closed, items are discussed.
Second.
Perfect. Nicole, would you take it, Nicole, what?
Councilmember Wood?
Yes.
Councilmember Whitstone?
Yes.
Councilmember Harmon?
Yes.
Councilmember Keon?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Norcal?
Yes.
Near Lake.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimous.
Okay, I'll give five minutes for everybody to. Hand it places and we'll start that.